Meeting of July 21st, boy, the month is flying by, huh? With the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Council Agency Member Falcone.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
House.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Bloom.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, we have several people here who would like to speak, starting with Ruth Wilson and then Bob Hanson. Hi Ruth.
Good afternoon. I've missed you, gone for five weeks to Maui.
We've missed you.
Oh, thanks. Well, you know, we prayed for you when we were over there. And, you know, we get some objectivity when we get away too. We appreciate what goes on in Santa Barbara. But also, it really sinks in how chaotic our world is right now. The economics are so upsetting and there are no answers that are easy. People are really stirred up. And I keep thinking it's because God wants us to return to Him. This is a time when we reach the end of our rope and we need His counsel. The word He keeps giving me is to simplify. I'm an old lady, I remember the good old days, things were a lot simpler, we did fine. Simple's good, I think we've gotten used to more and more and more and we need to back it up. So I lift you up with all the changes going on, with the elections coming up, all this change, I want to lift it all up and place it in God's hand and ask Him to pour His Holy Spirit upon you. And from Scripture, I ask, Lord, that you give them the fruit of your Spirit, love, joy, patience, peace, goodness, kindness. I'm missing one, gentleness, there's a good one, and self-control. And Lord, I just ask that today's work would go more smoothly because of your presence, in Jesus' name, amen.
Bob Hanson will be followed by David Less. It was short for homeless.
I was gonna hurry.
There you go.
Hold on, turn about two minutes over.
Okay, there you go.
I got four minutes?
Who knew?
I want to see it on four minutes, that's two. Man, my minutes are going, but anyway. You know, it is a hectic world we live in and I want to try to get people's ideas for Obama, President Obama's national plan for the homeless. Because each city is, and I have this kind of a big post-it, so people can write things on it, we can post it up and look at them and get busy. I was watching the news where the soldier was captured and all, and the final thing he said was, please help us get out of this war and bring us home. I think we need to be a world that is at peace and not this madness. It's so sad that we're basically on the eve of destruction. And we've been that way for many years since we built these crazy bombs and things and hate each other so much. And here in Santa Barbara, there's a war against the homeless. Some police officers are getting people on a bus, giving them a couple beers, $10, go to Vegas. That's not right. Now, there is some plans over at the Casa where you phone and find out if there's some place that you can go and maybe get a job or have housing. And they're even calling that housing, getting people housing. I don't think that's really housing, that's taking someone out of our community and taking them maybe back to their mom and dad's house and stuff. So there's a number of games happening, how many people we got to work and how many people are into housing. And with a national agenda, we could sit there and say, you know, all across this nation, people are pulling together. It's not going to happen overnight, but each city, I went this last, from Friday till Sunday, San Diego, Laguna Beach, Venice, same thing happening there. But sometimes people say, let's come up with some good ideas to help them and help the community, because we're all in this. You know, we're all in this till the whole thing goes, you know, wherever we're all going to go, because we're on the verge of destruction. So until that time, it'd be nice to be proud that Santa Barbara is trying to do the best it can in these difficult times with homeless people, because each one's different. And we've tried to come up with solutions or ideas and offer people a place to stay, let's say a warehouse, group home, a parking area, they can pay and they can volunteer if they can't pay. So it's not a freebie, and people get upset about that, oh yeah, you're going to give the homeless something free. No, it's not free. And try to make the best that we can. I'm running for mayor and that's my message, is that we need to really look at our nation because this city too is waging war against the homeless. I was at a meeting at the Casa Esperanza and the lady, Amelda, was saying, oh, we're not in bed with the police, but you are in bed with the police. A person comes over there, might be inebriated, and instead of maybe doing something, little place inside or helping somebody, oh, you can't come in, we'll call the cops. And here's a person that now the House of Hope has turned to, I'm not going back there. So we need to look at all kinds of things and it's, stop the war that we're basically in in other parts of the world, stop the war here, and be proud that we are probably going to go down with the ship, but at least we tried in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Villa, in Spanish, it's Villa, but I think, is it Villa?
Yes, it's Villa.
It's funny, the last person with this last name told me it was Villa, so it's either way, but Villa. And then you'll be followed by Daniel Knapp. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Jack Villa and I come to you as a representative of the American Postal Workers Union. And I work out of the Oxnard office and you're probably wondering why I'm over in Santa Barbara. Well, Oxnard is going through a consolidation plan by the Postal Service. They've been consolidating plants throughout the country and Oxnard is one of those plants. And right now, they've just completed a feasibility study that the report says would save $1.8 million for the year. But our position is that is a small amount of money compared to what the citizens of Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and San Luis Obispo County will lose. When we first learned of the impact report, we thought it was only going to impact Ventura County. And so I went to several, in fact, all of the city councils in Ventura County, County Board of Supervisors, Lois Capps, Senator Feinstein, and Chamber of Commerce. And because I, we figured it would only affect Ventura County. But after the completion of the feasibility study, we found out that the impact would spread all the way up to San Luis Obispo. And how it would affect you is that right now, the service commitment for businesses and individuals in Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo mailing a letter from your county to Ventura County, the commitment is one day, which is a 45-cent stamp. If they go through with this plan, the service commitment would be two days. So it would take two days for a resident or business in Santa Barbara to mail a letter from here to Oxnard or Ventura, Camarillo, it would take two days instead. And if that business wanted to have communication in one day, that cost would be $10 for that letter, if they wanted to communicate, send a letter, package, what have you, it would be $10 a piece of mail, for one piece of mail. And so at the end of this feasibility study, the community leaders of all the communities that were affected have a right for input. And I gave you on the packet, August 5th is when the community leaders will have their chance for input into this decision. And I kind of came to you kind of late, only because we didn't think it would affect Santa Barbara, but it looks like it's going to affect the citizens of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo, so...
So is your contact information on there?
Yes.
Okay.
To contact me is right in the front.
Okay.
I can furnish the city council and the mayor with the feasibility study.
Okay.
You can contact me as far as understanding what the feasibility study...
Okay. I think this is the first time we've heard about it, maybe somebody else has, but, so thank you.
Another thing, what we've found throughout the country, when the Postal Service has been consolidating plants throughout the country, a lot of times, they did not involve the community leaders. And through the, by law, the Code of Federal Regulations requires the Postal Service to notify the community leaders so they can have input.
Okay.
And so that's why I'm here before you, so that you can have input into this decision.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for letting us know. We can't talk about it because it's not on our agenda, but we appreciate it, you letting us know. Daniel Knapp is the last speaker.
Yes, hello. Speaking of agenda items, I'm up here to avoid that process. I thought I'd come in and give you a heads up on what I think of your public restroom situation in this town and what I've witnessed. I'm a very public person, seeing that I'm residentially challenged, so I notice things like this. The coffee shop I frequent is overrun by customers using the restroom every day. I've seen police officers have to wait there to use the restroom. The restroom that was put up by Borders Bookstore is wholly inadequate, totally overpriced, to the point where Borders can't afford to keep their restrooms open because they get overused and because of the pumping situation they have because they're in the basement and because the ladies restroom has a tendency to get backed up. Anyway, events like the farmer's market should be, as far as I'm concerned, I hate mandates, but it's an event and there's thousands of people there and there's one restroom, one public restroom in that area that we fought three years to get open, in a public garage. I don't see why this town cuts its nose off to spite its face, it's a tourist community and I see tourists all the time at parking lot ten, grumbling, 15-deep, Starbucks 15-deep, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's incumbent upon you to take note of this and maybe study it. And we don't need million-dollar bathrooms, porta-potties would do just fine in any parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last public speaker. Consent calendar, you have several items to read by title only.
Item two, introduction of ordinance for seven-year license agreement with Web Laundry Service Company, LLC, recommending that council approve a license with Web Service Company, LLC, and introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a seven-year license agreement with Web Service Company, LLC, effective August 29, 2009, for a 156-square-foot laundry room at 307 Shoreline Drive. Item three, adoption of ordinance establishing a building safety assessment placard system, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Title 22 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to add Chapter 22.09, establishing a building safety assessment placard system. Item four, adoption of ordinance approving grant of easements on city property near the Martin Bay fig tree for the Lower Mission Creek project, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a grant of easement to Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for the Lower Mission Creek project. Item five, statement of investment policy and delegation of investment authority for fiscal year 2010, including recommendation A that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the investment policy for the city and rescinding Resolution Number 08068. And item six, proposed minor amendments to city fee resolution, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 09043 to clarify consent review fees for design review, adjust residential parking permit fees in the downtown parking program, and add a convenience fee for online payment of police department charges.
Okay, we, those were all reading by title only, without objection, we'll wait for the reading. Does anybody want to take anything off of the consent calendar?
Oh.
Seeing no one, we'll entertain a motion.
Oh.
Okay.
I want to pull number eight, please.
Oh, number eight, okay, thank you, I thought you were going to make a motion. Sometimes you're good at quick motions, but we'll see. Item eight, okay, can you read the title of that, please?
Sole-source yearly maintenance agreement with Akela Incorporated for land development team permit tracking software.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
Reason, I just wanted to ask a question. Generally, I don't like sole-source contracts, but I do understand that sometimes that's the only way we can go. What my question is, is concerning the length of time, which is five years. The staff item actually says that you intend to go out for bids, so it seemed to me that perhaps a three-year contract would be a better deal for the city. I just wanted someone to help me with that.
Okay, Mr. Casey.
Madam Mayor, council members, this is our permit tracking, permit tracking software that we have that supports the whole land development team. They're very expensive pieces of proprietary software and so the one right now is with the Sella, and so that's why you need to use the Sella for the maintenance agreement, which is why it's sole-source, but I think that makes sense in this case. And you're right, Councilmember Horton, that in the best of worlds, the system is getting old and we would like to replace it and we have a hope to replace it at some point. The cost to replace these items, though, are very expensive. We have a technology fee that we've been collecting money from building permits, but the amount of money that we're collecting is much slower over the last year and we expect it to be substantially slower in the near term going forward as well, such that we're not highly confident that we're going to have enough funds to be able to get a replacement system within the three years that we had originally hoped. And so we just felt for expediency's sake and simplicity's sake, to go ahead and give us the authority to keep the system we've got, it's annual increments that we reauthorize with the Sella, and so at any point, if we're ready to move on to a new system, we can terminate the contract and move forward. But we just think, practical standpoint, it might be five years before we're ready for this.
Yeah, thank you, Paul, I understand that. I just think generally, for the good of the city, a shorter contract is a better deal.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, that's perfectly fine as well. It's not a great inconvenience to us if you'd prefer three years.
But this is only, this is done on an annual basis, four or five years is what you're saying.
Correct, Madam Mayor, it's done on an annual basis. We're just asking for the authority to do it for five one-year increments. If you would prefer to do it for three one-year increments, that's fine as well, but our recommendation was five.
Okay, yeah. I'm fine with the five, because knowing, I don't think our budget's going to pop right back from what the state's doing to us, et cetera, for us to have the money to buy a new system, although I know you would like that. So I'm fine with the five, but go ahead, Mr. Horton, if there's some, if you'd like to make it three.
I just wanted to have it discussed, so I'm okay with the five.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I understand the sole sourcing thing too, that's always difficult, because you keep thinking there's got to be somebody else trying to sell you the same thing, but I understand, because this is, they're software, so they probably can maintain it better than anybody. Mr. House.
Actually, if there's no more conversation on that, I'd like to move the consent calendar, so may I?
Okay, if I could just be quiet, that would be fine.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Williams, we have a report from the Ordnance Committee.
The Ordnance Committee met today for a surprisingly brief amount of time to talk about the proposed amendments to the 2007 Fire Code about fire sprinkler requirements. This was the second time that we discussed this and essentially, we took care of some of the potential controversial elements and really, you know, approved an idea that was brought forward by some realtors and builders to make this happen in a less onerous manner and something that homeowners could do only when they're basically overhauling most of the building. So it will come to council soon.
Okay, make a recommendation, comes back to council.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Item 14.
Loans for Artisan Court Affordable Housing Project at 416 to 424 East Cota Street, including recommendation D that council and the agency board adopt, by reading of title only, a joint resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara and the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Santa Barbara, finding that the use of redevelopment agency housing set-aside funds for development of affordable housing located outside the Central City Redevelopment Project Area, CCRP, at 416 to 424 East Cota Street will be of benefit to the CCRP.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Falstich.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council and the agency board. I'm Stephen Falstich, I'm the Housing Program Supervisor, and it's my pleasure to present a request from the City Housing Authority for loans totaling $3.2 million to fund a 56-unit low-income project on the 400 block of East Cota Street, directly across from the Moms Restaurant property that you'll be hearing about shortly, as the next item, I believe. It's going to be a two- and three-story complex, there'll be 55 small studio apartments, and by small, it's 406 square feet, so it's larger than the units at El Creo, but still very compact. Each will be, you know, self-contained. And there'll be also, in addition to those 55 units, there'll be a two-bedroom unit for the resident manager. The target population will be a combination of low-income downtown workers, youth who are transitioning out of foster care and who are at risk of becoming homeless, and also persons who are chronically homeless or people at risk of homelessness. So this project will address in part the needs identified in the countywide 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness, which is called Bringing Our Community Home. The Housing Authority bought and landbanked this site in 2006 with the assistance of a $2-million loan from the Redevelopment Agency, and the balance was made up by a $2.25 million loan from the Santa Barbara Bank and Trust. The property is developed as commercial space and it's still being used as commercial space, including space for the Hagan Printings Company. The Housing Authority has been making payments on the bank loan, using the income from the commercial leases. And of course, once the property is developed, that building will be demolished and the income will stop. And so then the Housing Authority needs to deal with the existing bank loan. They've requested, as part of this 3.2 million financing, that 2 million of it be available and used toward retiring the existing bank loan. And the Housing Authority has some reserves built up from the income of the commercial leases, as well as, I think, some of their own resources, that will pay the difference and be able to pay off the property so that there's no payments due. Of the $3.2 million that's being requested in city and agency loans today, 1.2 million will be used for the project development costs, toward the costs, and the 2 million will be used for paying down the existing bank loan. When we consider the prior agency loan of $2 million on the property, the total city loans to the project will be $5.2 million, and divided by the 55 or 56 units, this represents a subsidy of approximately $93,000 per unit. The Housing Authority has applied for federal low-income housing tax credits through the state of California, and that's going to be the major source of covering the development costs. The development cost excluding the cost of the land and the developer fee will be $12.6 million, and only 1.2 million of this is coming from the city and agency, and the balance of $11.4 million will come from the federal low-income housing tax credits. They've applied, they haven't heard, I believe they're hearing in September whether they get that. All of your actions today are contingent upon them receiving that money because of the tax credits, because without it, this project as structured couldn't go forward. The borrower of the 1.2 million dollars, speaking of tax credits, will go toward a limited partnership that is, needs to be established for the purpose of holding the property during the 15-year tax credit period. And that property is called Artisan Court Limited Partners. And then the borrower for the $2 million to be used to pay off the bank loan will be the Housing Authority, because they're the borrower on that. The city and agency loans will bear interest at 3% per year, and as is common with our financing for affordable housing, the payments will only be due on what we call a residual receipt basis, meaning that no payments will be due until or unless the net income of the project allows, and that could be many, many years down the line. Any unpaid balance that might remain after 60 years will then become due and payable. And these terms are typical of the city and agency's affordable housing loans. The loans will be secured by trust deeds against the property. There's a large amount of cash equity because of this $11.4 million in low-income housing tax credits, so we'll have, you know, very little, well, there'll be a lot of equity, as I said. And once the project is complete, then our loans will be very well secured. During the construction phase, though, there'll be a construction loan on the property that our loan will have to be subordinate to. And so, as is often the case, the agency assumes some risk in these construction deals if something unexpected were to happen and the project couldn't go forward to completion. But in the case of tax credit projects, like El Creo, like the Mental Health Association project on Garden Street, and many others, this project, the construction contract will be fully bonded, so that if the contractor walks off or something, there's going to be money to assure completion of the project. So staff believes the risk of default during construction is very low and is acceptable under the circumstances, and of course, the solid, the rock-solid track record of the City Housing Authority gives us a lot of reason to be confident. In addition, you're being asked to revise the terms of the $2-million loan that the agency made in 2006, basically to bring the terms of that loan in conformance with the terms of the new loans, and also to approve subordination of that loan to the construction loan and the tax credit regulations. Last week, as three of you know intimately, the council's loan committee reviewed this loan request in detail and unanimously recommended that city council approve the loans and the other staff recommendations. Paul Casey also has some comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Falstich, Mayor, council members. Just one follow-up, one of the conversations at the Finance Committee last week was making a more direct linkage between the tenure plan and chronic homelessness, and also the council's recent action on homeless issues when you adopted the 12-point plan that came out of the council subcommittee. And that is trying to deal with the chronically homeless and trying to move them into housing opportunities. And so in talking with the Housing Authority and working collaboratively with them, we'd like to recommend coming up with some language where we try to identify maybe up to 30% of these units to try to be targeted towards the chronically homeless. And kind of work out the flexibility with the Housing Authority about how to phrase that, but we think that would be a good commitment for kind of that portion of the project and to provide that link with those two programs that council has been working very diligently on, and this is a great project, to try to tie in and link with those efforts. And so we just wanted to put that out there as well and get council's direction to have us just work with the Housing Authority to kind of tidy up those details.
Okay, good. Ms. Falcone.
Is the presentation finished? I have some comments.
Yes, I only had one more comment, which was that Mr. Rob Fredericks and Mr. Skip Samansky are here from the City Housing Authority, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer questions as well as I.
And Barbara Allen from their board, too.
Oh.
Newly reappointed.
Chair of the board.
Oh, she's the chair now. Well, that's what happens when you get reappointed. Okay, very good. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Again, thank you for this, yes, we did see this at Finance Committee last week. It's a fantastic program and we're very pleased that all those many years ago, maybe, ooh, I don't know, seven or eight or six, we landbanked that land and we've been sitting on it for all these years waiting for this to go. And I have nothing but enthusiasm for this project, particularly the way it's been financed. but enthusiasm for this project, particularly the way it's been financed. And you are a magician, Mr. Falstich. You've done so much over the years that I've been here with financing these really fantastic projects, from St. Vincent's to the mental health to El Correo and all of them. You deserve nothing but high praise and kudos, so I want to really thank you so much for all your work that you've done. I want to speak to something that I spoke to last time at the Finance Committee, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart, and I believe that it doesn't get the kind of focus that this subject matter or population deserves. And it was my first career as a crisis counselor, and it has to do with the teens that are coming out of foster care. These teenagers who are turning 18 are being let go of the only system that they have known, very often from being young children, possibly even infancy. And by definition, these kids have no families because they're in foster care. If they had families of any kind, they'd be with their aunts and uncles or having been returned to their parents in one way, shape, or form. But they've been bounced around very likely from home to home, and they have no family. These are the kids I used to work with, and the community, this community is their family. These are our kids, and I think it's incumbent upon us, we have a responsibility as a community to make sure that these young people hitting the age of 18 and now having absolutely nowhere to go, no resources, they're out of all the systems that they know, and what are they supposed to do? We need to make sure that while we help them get skills, find jobs, get to schooling, access CC, or some other educational facility, or just a skills network, electricians, plumbers, all the trades, we need to make sure that they have housing. Otherwise, they end up sitting in front of Starbucks on State Street. I don't think this is what we want to do. When we build a facility like this, we have a lot of very vulnerable populations, but this is one of them that gets short shrift, in my humble opinion, never gets focused on. Outside of Noah's Anchorage, there is no facility that really focuses just on the teens who come out of foster care or who are in crisis of some kind. So I really think that we need to make sure that this facility has a meaningful number of units to house this population. I know they don't fit into what has been defined as the chronically homeless. However, these kids will become chronically homeless if we, as a community, don't put a safety net of some kind under them, and housing is fundamental to this. So I implore you, while you're working with the Housing Authority, I have no problem with what you have just suggested, although I think the percentage may be high, given that we have other populations of dire need. And I really would like to see some focus finally be put on our kids who have no other families and no other resources. I worked with these kids for many years, and they don't have to go down the path that is ultimately going to be theirs if we help them, and this is the first step. So please, I implore you to really give this some meaningful thought. I know I said this at Finance Committee. I'm going to keep saying it, and I will keep saying it more loudly if I need to. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Horton?
Stephen called us the Loan Committee, but I think he meant the Finance Committee.
You know, I rely on people like you to interpret what I say, to, you know, to... Thank you for catching that error.
Whatever he calls us. We thought it was a great program, and we're 100% supportive of it.
Mr. House?
Thank you very much, and really thank you for all the work you're doing on this. And I love the mental image that goes along with rock-solid track record of the Housing Authority. I mean, it just really is, isn't it? It's amazing. And project after project, and meeting our need right where it is. And I really want to second Councilmember Falcone's encouragement to continue doing this kind of work. A couple of things just to look at. The, let's see, the covenant for affordability is for how long?
It'll be for 60 years.
For 60 years. Okay, very good. There's some mentioning here a term of 90 years, and I didn't, I was wondering about that. Is that different from, in our staff report, from the actual agreement?
No, actually, that's a good question. Our new standard policy is to do a 90-year, excuse me, Councilmember, House Mayor Bloom, Councilmember House. The new standard affordability term is generally 90 years, and we haven't drafted that document yet, and I'm sorry that I didn't remember what was put in. So the only time we would make it 60 instead is if that's a requirement of the low-income housing tax credits.
We're allowed to go out to 90 by the terms of the tax credits and all, aren't we?
You know, I think we are. I don't remember any constraints on that.
Okay, sorry to put you on the spot. I guess the point of my comment is to really be encouraging as long as possible.
Okay.
Under the law, and I think that our staff report is pointing in that direction, whatever it may be, and I'm hopeful that we do that, because certainly these kinds of facilities are going to be very precious as time goes on. They'll serve multiple generations of lives, and we need to really make sure that we've protected them against the market, quite honestly. The 56 units, is one going to be for the manager of the facility, and then the other 55 are available for people in the community? Is that, I see people shaking their hands there?
Yes.
Okay, so 55 units are going to be available. I think this seems to me that this project designed by Christine Perron and Mark Wenke, who have also done work for us before, right? They worked on the El Correo, I think.
Yes, I believe, Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, that Christine was the architect. I think she was working for a different firm at the time, but she was the one that was in, took the lead on the El Correo project, which of course is absolutely beautiful. In fact, as Hugh would say, "It's amazing!" So...
And got some good coverage from Hugh Howser, too.
Yes, it did.
Excellent. We'll make sure that, see if we can find some way to get that show around here, around town. What a great program. Anyway, just one more little thing, and it goes along with how this ties in with our overarching, a larger approach to homelessness or to the preventative side of that, too, because these are people who could very well find themselves in that spot. But this is one way to head that off by providing a quality home environment that is also associated with some services, and there will be services in a nearby neighborhood and around, and I think that's the key. The idea is home first and services associated directly with that, and that lifts people up, and it also helps them to avoid it when they're really on the brink. So I really commend you all for the work you're doing on this. I'm very happy to support this today.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
So the ratio is 1/3 for the chronically homeless, and there is a number to address foster care, and then the rest are downtown worker slots like...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, we weren't trying to get so fine, a percentage define all the different categories. The three main categories, which I think we're all strongly supportive of and are all critically needed, are included in the project, and we'll leave it to the Housing Authority to blend that operationally as best they can.
Okay. Because I agree that those are three priorities. I mean, number one, getting people off the street, that is an important one. But of course, it's just as important to prevent new people from in and out on the street, and so I do think our traditional role in trying to house low-income downtown workers is an important one, and the foster, former foster kids is a one that I think is a good one to be thinking about. And, you know, I just want to remind folks that, you know, we are one of the, I guess, the second highest home prices in the state after Marin and the county, and yet we have one of the lower median incomes of any suburban or urban county in the state, more comparable with a rural county. And so the gap there makes it very difficult for a lot of people to be able to survive in this town, and we want to help the Housing Authority's mission of being able to house a significant portion of folks, of a strata of incomes. And want to just implore the council to have a continued support as we move forward in the coming years, because it's going to be even more crucial for us to find methods of continuing financing after the sunset of the RDA.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. As I said last week at Finance, this is a great project, and really looking forward to the groundbreaking. Good luck with your application for the tax credits. That's a key piece coming up in September. And I wrote down great track record. I didn't have rock-solid, but that's really where it is with the Housing Authority. I really want to commend the City Housing Authority on so many great partnerships between the Housing Authority and the city of Santa Barbara. And I trust the details of whatever language that you need to finalize can be done. You've heard from us where our priorities and interests are. Just to also put out there, the current, the countywide tenure plan, the Bringing Our Community Home Plan does talk about, in good detail, about a prevention side to this, as we've been discussing up here, and specifically mentions foster care youth transitioning out of the system. And the national statistic of foster care youth when they transition out of the system is if, within two years, half of them will become homeless. So it's a tragedy, and it's a terrible statistic that I hope we can turn around here in Santa Barbara. Earlier this year, I had the honor of being asked, and I've joined the Santa Barbara County Advisory Committee for Casa Pacifica, which is based in Camarillo and is a residential facility for foster care youth. It is in Camarillo. It's the place where Santa Barbara County foster care youth go to because there is no place in Santa Barbara County. So that, I think, in and of itself is also another, you know, big gap in our system here in the county, and hopefully we can coordinate with them in terms of when they can no longer house the youth because they're 18, there might be some great people to bring them back home where they belong in Santa Barbara County through Artisan Court. So that, I think, is a tremendous opportunity for us. Also, I mentioned this last week at the Finance Committee. I wanted to bring it up for everyone else, that part of what worked, I think, with this process was the redevelopment agency assisted the Housing Authority in purchasing the property a couple of years ago, and they kept the lease open for Hagan Printing. So this was a business that had a lease, that had continued to stay in business, that continued now paying their lease payments to the Housing Authority, thus reducing the cost of the overall property by tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of dollars. And so that, I thought, was a very smart model for perhaps we can look at into the future, as opposed to closing up storefronts, having them empty for a couple of years while a design goes through the planning process, and also bringing in revenue to help offset the eventual cost of this acquisition in the building. So I commend you for that and working that out, because that, certainly being commercial lease managers or oversight, that's an added duty, but I think served us well. And then finally, I'll just mention, you know, today, it's kind of interesting that we're voting on this today, the same day that in Sacramento, they're talking about taking away redevelopment agency funds from all cities throughout the state, of billions of dollars. And this is the type of need that we have and what should redevelopment agency funds should be used for. And it's, there's so many good reasons why we have redevelopment agency funds, and if that really comes through with the state budget, you know, I know there'll be a big fight about it, but I think we have to remember the good things that come out of redevelopment agency funds, and this is certainly a jewel in the crown of the redevelopment agency. So, thank you very much.
Okay. I think this is a wonderful project, too. The 30%, and I know we're not going to exactly nail it down, of homeless and chronically homeless and foster care youth is, I can't see us going anymore. I just want to give you a little bit of warning there, because I know we've had some problems. And I know this Housing Authority, though, they know all about it at some other sites when we try to do too much, and so we have to be very careful. But I think it is a good, it's a good idea to take care of these folks. And I also think we have to be a little careful about the rhetoric having to do with foster care youth, because some of them make it out just fine, and some of them do establish a relationship with their foster care families. I know that doesn't happen often, but that does happen sometimes. So I don't want to label everybody who's in foster care, but I'm so glad we're doing some reaching out for them, because that's a really good idea. And of course, it's in our tenure plan, so that's good. So I think it's, I think this is a very wonderful, 56 units, 55 units for low-income people. I think it's just absolutely wonderful. So thank you for putting this together, Housing Authority. We love you. Mr. House?
Thank you. I'm just about to make a motion. This one, but Ms. Schneider did something that I really feel is compelled to do today, and that is to encourage whomever is watching this right now who sees the value of our use of redevelopment agency funds to make the improvements in the city of Santa Barbara that have been so incredibly, I mean, have been invaluable, from our parking lots to the reversing blight wherever it begins to show up, to being able to provide this ongoing stream of very, very fundamental support that magnifies in value as we cooperate with our sister agency here, with the Housing Authority, and then we are able for a small amount, literally a relatively small amount of local funds to be able to achieve so much more. And that this ability is being literally attacked at the state level, and funds being proposed to be robbed directly from this. And I just, I just would really encourage people, I know it's not on the agenda, but I just have to wing out on this one, because it's, this is an example of what's being threatened by Sacramento's move, and I just, I just hope people can recognize how important and valuable it is. In any case, I move that we do what it says here on A to F in our staff report and approve this set of loans.
Second.
Okay. It is moved and seconded. Any other comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Item...
Rob, any comments?
Oh, sure. I should have called you up here. We were just telling you how wonderful you are. I thought you just wanted to sit back and bask in the glow. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Rob Fredericks. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for the Housing Authority, and as Mr. Falstich mentioned, my colleague Skip Samansky is here, as well as our Board Chair, Barbara Allen. And I wanted to thank you for your consideration of our request this afternoon, and to let you know that we are approaching our 40th anniversary in October of our existence as a Housing Authority in the city of Santa Barbara, and we're very proud of our rock-solid track record. In fact, we're very proud that people can drive up and down our city streets and pick out Housing Authority properties only because they're the best-looking and well-managed properties throughout the city.
That's right.
And we've been able to do that over 40 years because of our partnerships with the city, with the city staff, and with the redevelopment agency. We can't do it on our own, and it's only because of those strong partnerships and because we do look forward to the future and what the community affordable housing needs are, and we are committed to meeting those needs. So again, I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fredericks, and thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, item number 15, please.
Loan for Moms Place Affordable Housing Project Sponsored by Transition House at 421 East Cota Street.
Okay, Mr. Kiefer, is this yours?
Yes, it is. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Chair, members of the Agency Board and Council. I'm Simon Kiefer. I'm a project planner. I have today here a request from Transition House for $680,000 in home funds. This is for a new project that's across the street from Artisan Court, which you just heard about, and there are lots of similarities here, but a few different wrinkles in the financing and the target population, and it's a little smaller. Transition House is looking to construct a new mixed-use building that will have eight rental housing units for homeless families and an infant care center. We have two agency loans on the property, and those will need to be amended, and it's important that we commit these home funds. We're facing an August 30th deadline to commit these funds, or HUD will take them back. Briefly, just some background about Transition House. They've provided food, shelter, and support services to homeless families over the last 25 years. In 1992, they acquired a warehouse at 434 East Ortega Street and converted that to a shelter for families. In 1999, they had the opportunity to acquire the adjacent property, which is the Moms' property, and over the last 10 years now, they've been planning a large cohesive campus that involves both sites that's designed to serve the needs of homeless families. This proposed project represents the final stage in developing this campus. We have two buildings on the Moms' property site, one being the Cordova Center Building, and then the Moms' Restaurant Building. Now as for the Moms' building, they're going to be demolishing that and constructing a new mixed-use building that will be of approximately 10,000 square feet. There will be eight units of affordable rental housing, be six two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms, and then there'll be an infant care center on the ground floor with 2,000 square feet. The housing will be permanent housing for formerly homeless families that are participating in Transition House self-sufficient... in Transition House self-sufficiency programs. This will be the third stage in the Transition House continuum. So we have the shelter being the first, and then transitional housing being the second, and then permanent housing like this for the third stage. The other building on the property is the Cordova Center Building, and this is a modern mixed-use building that has Transition House offices on the ground floor and program space. And then above that, there are eight existing units on the second floor. Since 1999, Transition House has been moving client families in as vacancies arose in the existing units. Plans here also involve rehabilitating the Cordova Center Building, so they'll be getting a new roof, apartments will be renovated, and then there will be a bridge that will be connecting the two buildings. So the total project will be 16 units. Rents will range from $437 to slightly over $1,000, depending on the size of the unit and household income. This is, the tenant income that's going to be targeted will be to low and very low income. So we're looking at 25, 50, and 60 percent of area median income, which is deeper targeting that we usually require, but it's reflective of the Transition House clientele, and it meets the requirements of two important funding sources, the low-income housing tax credits and the state supportive housing program. And before I get into the financing, though, the development team, let me introduce them. We have some familiar faces there. We have Transition House that has set up the Moms Limited Partnership, just like you heard for the last project, for tax credits. We need to set up a limited partnership. The general partners there will be the Santa Barbara Housing Assistance Corporation and Garden Court. And we've seen them before in other tax credit projects with El Correo and Garden Court. Transition House will retain ownership of the land and then ground-lease it to the new limited partnership. The Moms LP will acquire the existing buildings, and then they will own the newly, new building that's being constructed. After that 15-year of tax credit requirements, Transition House will then have an option to acquire the buildings and terminate the ground lease. The Housing Authority is involved. They'll be assisting by helping manage the construction. And we have Artisan Court and Moms sharing the same architecture team of Christine Peron and Mark Wenke. Frank Thompson is the financial consultant. So let's see what this thing is going to cost us. It's estimated to be at $8 million, which includes the new construction, the renovation, and the acquisition of the buildings by the Moms LP. Going back to the original acquisition in 1999, we had a first trust deed from Santa Barbara Bank and Trust at about $700,000. We have the redevelopment agency providing $320,000 for, as an acquisition loan. And then Transition House raised close to $2 million for this $3 million acquisition back in 99. Since then, the agency has provided $120,000 loan for pre-development of the new project. So looking now towards construction, then, the critical piece here is a bridge loan that they're getting from Montecito Bank and Trust, and this is for nearly $3.5 million. This will be used for construction and to pay off the existing Santa Barbara Bank and Trust loan. In second position, then, will be the two agency loans and the new proposed home loan. Looking after construction, in first position would be a loan from the state supportive housing program. This is a new bond-funded program that's run by State Housing Community Development. It's designed for homeless and special needs populations, so it's a combination of providing the housing and the special needs services. And that's exactly what Transition House does so well. Then in second position will again be the two agency loans and the proposed new home loan. What we're proposing here for the home loan is one of our typical loans. It would be at 3% interest, it would be 60-year term, and it would be repaid on the basis of residual receipts, just like we discussed with the Artisan Court. The critical piece to the permanent financing, again, is the tax credits. Again, we're looking at close to, well, over half of the cost of the project being covered by the tax credits, over $4 million. This is a cash infusion. It adds no debt to the property. We're looking at a September announcement. It's a very competitive program. And what's critical to the chances of Transition House is the funding that they're requesting here. If they can show that commitment, then that's going to improve their standing in the tax credit application. And then lastly, Transition House will be putting in over $1 million to the project as well, of their own fundraising. So some housekeeping. We have to amend some of the existing documents. We have the existing agency loans. We'll need to authorize the assignment from Transition House to the new limited partnership that's going to be set up. We'd like to make the terms of the existing loans consistent with the loan terms of the new loan. And we would, we'd need to subordinate the loans to the bridge loan, the supportive housing program loan, and the regulatory agreements of the tax credits and the state supportive housing program. The covenant will also have to be subordinated to the new financing and the regulatory agreements. And so we will need to make some findings here, that there is no other economically feasible alternative sources for this, and that in the event of default, we have legal remedies so that we can cure the default, take the property if need be, and then preserve that affordability covenant. As with all tax credit projects, local public subsidy funds are in a great security position. After construction, we'll be in second position to only a $1 million loan that the state will be providing. We do have some exposure, as we, was discussed with Artisan Court during construction, but we, we think that that is manageable. The subsidy amount will be a total of $1,120,000. If we look at that in terms of maybe two stages, we did the acquisition back in 99. That was at $40,000 per unit. The new construction is going to be $100,000 per unit, and if we average everything together, it's going to be $70,000 per unit for the 16 units total. We find this all to be reasonable and consistent with other affordable housing projects that we've done with this level of affordability. We have sufficient home funds for this project, and it's important to note that these are federal funds that can only be used for creating affordable housing. We have no other use for these funds. And in fact, if we don't commit them by August 30th, as I mentioned, HUD will take them back. So in conclusion, staff reports the funding request from Transition House for the new $680,000 loan. Finance Committee reviewed this last week as well and approved it, and we request that the Council and the Agency Board take the recommended actions in the, in the agenda report.
Okay.
That concludes my report. And we have Kathleen Bouski from Transition House and Frank Thompson. Do you have any questions of us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything I forgot last time to ask the Housing Authority people? Kathleen, come on up.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I'd like to thank you for considering this request, and also thank you for hanging in with us for 10 years on this project. When we purchased with your help the property in 1999, we weren't sure what we would do on the Moms Restaurant site, but we knew that we wanted to do something for the community. And since we completed our shelter renovation, we've really been going as steady as we can to make this project happen. And certainly, the first piece of funding that we had for it was your pre-development loan, and it's been able to leverage all of these other opportunities. So I appreciate the support and your patience in Transition House's efforts to build its sustainability and capacity to develop affordable housing. Thank you.
No, thank you so much for all you do. It's wonderful. Ms. Schneider, did you have something? I think--
Just comments unless there's any other--
Yeah, I think we're done.
We're done.
Yeah, I don't have any speakers.
I just want to commend and recognize the complexity of this process and how many players are involved in making this happen. I mean, you know, this looks like it's 680,000, which in and of itself is a good chunk of change, but it's such a bigger piece to that in order to have all the pieces come into play. And if it, you know, between Kathleen Bouski, who's trying to run a shelter day in and day out, on top of that, doing this kind of work, and Mr. Thompson and the Housing Authority overseeing it, and then our own staff, who need to go through the intricacies of working with HUD and making sure we get the funding allocated in timely manner before it needs to go back. I mean, it's, this isn't easy, but I think when done right, we have great products at the end of the day. And I'll, I'll say again what I said last week. I just love the idea that there'll be a childcare facility in a place known as Moms. And it's really, it's really commendable. I look forward to seeing this move forward.
That is kind of funny, isn't it? That's good. Because Moms used to be a place for, we who've been here a little while, where the city council used to meet in the back room without anybody knowing about it, which was sort of, we can't do that anymore, we wouldn't even want to think about it. So I'm glad that's going to be demolished, but a childcare facility, how wonderful. Very good. Mr. Horton, and then Mr. House.
Just wanted to really call our, our council attention to the childcare portion of this. We've had a downtown childcare task force meeting for more than a year, well, more than a year. And that task force consists of people from the counties, Santa Barbara, the city, and many downtown businesses. And one thing that we have found as a result of a survey that we just did is that we're short, literally hundreds of spots in the downtown area for affordable and accessible childcare. And this, this project does provide both of those. It is so important for the mothers that were trying to transition back into the workforce, for them to feel comfortable that their kids are under good supervision and they're safe while the mothers are out working. And so this is a very, very important element of this project, and I'm totally supportive of it.
Good. Mr. House?
Yes, and Ms. Bouski, would you come back up for just a minute, please? Mr. Horton just began to do what I was going to ask you to do, and I'd like you to take it a little further for, not just for us, but for others who are watching. From the, from your clients, from your friends, from the people that use your services perspective, what's the meaning of this project that we're looking at here?
Well, the project serves two critical needs for the population that we work with. The first, of course, being affordable childcare for infants. And that is a huge barrier, not having it, to a family returning to work and ultimately getting back on their feet. So it's a, it's a critical component to solving homelessness in, in our agency's eyes, so that's why we're taking on the task of, of building the center. We currently have an infant care center for 12 babies on site. The new infant care center will be an expansion of that program, and we'll be able to serve or take care of 25 babies. The other critical part about this project is that we are using special needs funds from the state of California, so we will have the ability and will be required to serve a certain percentage of families in the complex with special needs, such as those that have severe mental illness, present in the head of household, that may be a barrier to them getting or retaining work full-time. We see families like this over and over again in our shelter, and there's little that we can do for them. They can't, they can't necessarily work and earn enough money to take care of their kids. They need ongoing support once they're in housing because of their mental health issues, and this project will provide that. It's a, it's a gap in, in homeless services in our communities, so that's what we wanted to focus on.
So, so where, where do people go from here? I mean, after they've had the chance to get their feet on the ground and get, get the kind of support that you're offering?
Well, the reason that we have a three-stage housing program is we realize it takes a long time before somebody can develop the life skills, the savings, and work their way up in a career field or with education to earn a wage that would allow them to pay market-rate rent. So even though the apartments are permanent, at some point, people want to move out on their own, they're able to, and, and the idea is that they have developed the attributes that their family needs to afford market-rate housing.
That's just great. Well, thank you for taking the time to explain. And I just, I just think this is wonderful. And again, this is a good example of this spirit of partnership that we've had for all these years, and let's just hope it keeps going like this, and we've got our commitment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. -- oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Falcone?
Question from Ms. Bouski. Please. You mentioned the special needs funding from the state. Do you see those in jeopardy in any way, given the chaos that is, is the state government at this moment, and they're talking about taking from a whole host of things, and social services is certainly--
Right. I don't know that the funding is in jeopardy in the sense that the funding will go away. The problem right now is the state has not released the funding, even though it's been designated. Until they fix their budget problems, they will not authorize the, the state's finance department to release the funds. They're there, we just can't spend them.
That begs my question.
Yes.
It's maybe there, but it may be diverted.
For a period of time.
Do you feel that that is a possibility for these funds at all?
Well, it, it could make difficulty for the project to move forward if everything else is in place. The tax credits require that the project begin within a certain timeframe. So if that's the case, we have always been a resourceful agency, and will, we've got a Plan B and a Plan C, and we'll, you know, we'll go to the community if we need to to get the money to keep going, so--
We can help you in Plan B or C, should that be needed. Hopefully, it won't be, but--
Right.
I think you hear the support of this entire council.
Great. Thanks for asking. I appreciate it.
Okay. So I think we're ready for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. That we, that we, I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendations A through E, and that we approve this project.
Seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. We're doing well today. This is good. Item 16, please.
Proposed new business sector trash and recycling rates.
As soon as you're ready, Mr. Samario. Oh, that was quick. Look at this. This is good. We've got the entire burnt-out world in somebody's hands there. That's good. I don't know what that is. What's that from? A trash?
It's an apple.
It's an apple? That is now the world. Okay. This is good. Okay, Mr. Samario, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Assistant Finance Director. And I'm joined today by Stephen McIntosh, our Environmental Services Supervisor, and he'll actually be doing most of the presentation today. Just kind of by way of background, you may recall that more than a year ago, we started on a project to look at our rates in the business sector. We, we actually hired a consultant and started a process, which we called the Rate Study. And the purpose of the Rate Study was to completely revamp our rates for businesses for trash and recycling. As you know, our current rate structure provides some financial incentives for folks to divert their trash away from the landfill into recycling containers. But we wanted to provide even greater incentives to, to businesses. We recognize that, that businesses really want to do the right thing, but in the end, they're interested in the bottom line, as they should be in their, as a business. And so we wanted to create even greater incentives for them. And so in that regard, we think this is a win-win situation, where we're, where businesses can save money, and at the same time, they can help the city and the community to reduce the impacts of our trash that's going to the landfill. So having said that, we were here, I think, in March of this year, and we had, we went over in detail the proposed rates. We looked at a lot of details and how it would impact individual businesses, whether they're small, large, or medium. At that time, this council approved in concept the new rates, but asked us to spend a little more time doing some outreach, because we recognized that there could be a lot of confusion with regard to new rates, even though in concept they make sense, warrant incentives to divert, that there could be a lot of confusion, misunderstandings. So we wanted to take the appropriate amount of time to go out and talk to businesses, to make sure they understood it, what we're doing and why we're doing it, how they can save money, and minimize the confusion whenever those rates take effect. So we originally were scheduled to have these rates going to effect July 1, and now we, as you'll see, we're scheduled to have them go into effect November 1. So really, the question today, at the end of this presentation, we'll be asking you to let us know whether you believe we've done enough in, by way of outreach, to minimize the, the confusion. We believe we have, and I think our presentation will hopefully get into the reasons why, but ultimately, that'll be the question. And if you do believe we have done enough outreach, then we'll be asking you to direct us to move forward with Proposition 218 noticing, which is via the utility bills, where we're noticing the new rates that'll be effective November 1. We'll be allowing the public to provide feedback, comments, or to contest the rates. We'll have a hearing in sometime in October. But again, our goal is to have these new rates in effect November 1, if you feel we're ready to move forward. So with that, unless there are any questions on sort of the background, I'm going to have Stephen take, take over.
Okay. Mr. McIntosh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. My name, again, is Stephen McIntosh. I'm the Environmental Services Supervisor. What we have before you is the results of our outreach efforts over the past several months for the proposed new rates, and a little bit of a background as well. We can go to the next slide. The outline of the presentation is as follows. We're going to kind of re-ground ourselves in the rate study and why we're doing, or proposing a new rate structure. We're going to talk about the overarching goals of the new structure, our approach and goals of the new structure, our approach and process, the objectives of the rate study, policy recommendations that came out of the effort, and then the actual results of the rate study, what we achieved, how it would impact customer bills, results of the efforts of the outreach program, again, and then the schedule of implementation or the proposed schedule. However, before I move on, I wanted to acknowledge Steve Hislop, who's in the chamber. He's the president of the Greater Santa Barbara Restaurant and Lodging Association. He was an active participant in our public forums and our outreach efforts, very helpful to the process, posed a lot of really good and tough questions to us, him and his staff. And I believe he actually has to go before we may be done, so I'm wondering if it's possible for us to let him come up.
Sure, I have a speaker. Mr. Hislop, do you have some customers in your restaurant or something? I hope so.
I hope so.
We're hoping so a lot, yeah. There you go.
It's a sunny day, so.
I know.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to talk before the presentation. It may actually be helpful, because the following is a synthesis of comments that were generated by some Lodging and Restaurant Association members, and some of the comments are from the general business community in response to the various outreach efforts. So some of these may be questions that can be answered. Some of them may be answers that some of the business community would disagree with, but I'm not here to present those arguments. Both council and staff are to be applauded for delaying this item in order to work on some additional outreach, and I think in general, that effort's been successful. The underlying business attitude is best described as cautiously supportive, with some less so, and fairly vocally less so, and some in very strong support. And I know that one or two of these council members were at the Lodging and Restaurant Association, or I believe it was Pam Weber, got up and gave some kudos to the staff for helping their hotels with some of the recycling efforts. But then the reality is that there are a number who have been stuck inside their four walls of their business, and the fact is, they may still not know that these rate changes are coming. Couple of presumptions put forth by staff in the process, especially as it affects downtown customers with limited space, have been consistent issues. That ample opportunities exist for effective bin sharing, where space is a problem, especially for latecomers to the program, and that the allowable visible display of recycling containers and dumpsters, per current ordinance, will not cause problems. Some of the other questions that continue to surface: What happens when the original subsidy budget to offset carrier expenses is gone? Initial rates will reward those who are diverting at or above 50%. What happens if the anticipated response is better than projected, or expenses rise, threatening the revenue-neutral plan? Food scrap programs' questions still linger regarding an actual county body not being in the building during the outreach process, to affirm that the city's scrap handling plan will absolutely, positively not be a problem with the county and vector control requirements. It was also repeatedly questioned by some of the participants, why, if the end product is so valuable, do we have to ship the scraps to Santa Maria instead of finding a local agricultural land? While the diversion bank for the buck in outreach efforts were focused on medium-to-large businesses, small and family-owned businesses that were not contacted or are not able to quickly work through the logistics of additional containers and separating waste, may still potentially see an increase that is of significant consequence to their budgets at a time when their businesses are already under significant financial pressure. As a couple of comments aside, direct mailings to service locations or utility bill stuffers are generally not effective as an outreach method. Management heads at many businesses don't ever see the received mail, and the bills themselves frequently don't go to the management or ownership addressed. They're addressed by others. And I've found personally, and I've had this conversation with many others in the business community, most every business owner I come in contact with to be a person who sincerely recognizes the special place that we all do business in, and we're supportive of both environmental and social improvements and protections. Finally, if the trash and recycling programs are successful in reducing trash sent to the Tahigus landfill, there's still a very large elephant in the room asking the question whether in 10 years or 20, what happens when Tahigus is full. Thank you very much for letting me step to the microphone prior to the presentation, and Stephen and Bob, I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. That was good. Mr. McIntosh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So moving on, and just by way of coming back around to Mr. Hislop's concerns, we do have some answers to a lot of those questions at the end of this presentation. So back into our presentation, the next slide. The overarching goals of the rate study or the new proposed rate structure is to encourage a shift toward diversion by businesses, or a large shift, rather. As Mr. Hislop said at the end of his comments, Tahigus is going to be full in the next 10 to 15 years, and we do need to do something to move stuff away from disposal, and it's the diversion programs. Establishing a rate that does not yet exist for the food scraps program as part of the outcome, and then making business customers' bills easier to understand, allowing them to audit their bills, making the changes that they need to make as a business to reduce their costs and maximize their diversion. So the approach that we took included the formation of a team with both haulers, Allied Waste and Marborg Industries. We also hired an expert consultant in rate studies, Lisa Skoomatz with Skoomatz Economic Research Associates out of Colorado. She has done many dozens of rate studies like this across the country over the last couple of decades. And we developed a rate model, an actual econometric model that predicts behavior and generates revenues based on different behavior changes. The process of this project essentially began in April 2008, when we formed the team. We looked at rate studies in various jurisdictions throughout the country that were considering a similar approach with our saw waste stream, trying to divert more material from the landfill and incentivize businesses more. And then we began building the model itself with the team. It was a very iterative, fluid process. We identified a number of issues, policy issues, and eventually developed our recommendations. The team came to a consensus on all the assumptions built into the model, as you'll see a lot more detail on in just a moment. And then we presented the project or the results of the rate study over three meetings at the Saw Waste Committee. The objectives were to essentially reward and/or penalize individual customers based on their current level of diversion. Also, key was to allow all customers to be able to reduce their bills by increasing their diversion, to offset any immediate impacts to the new rates. Also, establishing a more uniform and logical structure to the saw waste rates. Currently, our rate structure for saw waste is not the most uniform, and it doesn't always make sense. And then finally, to ensure revenue neutrality, we are held by our contract with both haulers to make sure that they are held whole or kept whole on a revenue basis. The recommendations that staff proposed or came up with as part of the rate structure and council heard back in March were to increase the charges to a customer that was below 50% diversion, but allow them to achieve savings if they get to a higher rate of diversion. To discontinue the free 96 gallons of green waste and recycling for customers that have dumpsters, however, maintain this free service for customers that have cans and carts. They still receive that first 96 gallons free. Establishing a collection frequency penalty whereby if a customer's getting six times-a-week collection for a couple of two-yard bins, if they could go down to a couple of four-yard bins and get it picked up three or four times a week, they save the haulers a lot of time and resources, and they can save themselves time and resources by reducing the frequency that a truck has to be dispatched to go out there. And then setting the diversion prices at 15%, the price of trash, a considerable discount. That was key in this effort. We wanted to make it extremely attractive to businesses to want to divert, and we think that establishes that goal. The rate study results from all of the effort of the team. What we were able to achieve is that in virtually all cases, customers will have an opportunity to save money on their bills by increasing their diversion. We are able to generate additional funds for rate stability, in other words, about $300, $350,000, which will allow us to carry from one year to the next and not have to make quite as large an adjustment if necessary. And then the diversion target, the major assumption in the model is to get a 7% diversion over the prior year in the business sector. By the end of the year, it would be a 14% diversion rate, an increase in the diversion rate. For cart-and-can customers, they represent 31% of the entire business sector, but they're only 6% of the waste stream. So not a lot of the waste is coming from cart-and-can customers, however, it's a third of the customer base. Most customers in the cans and carts, regardless of the diversion levels, will see a very slight increase to their monthly bills if they take no action. The customers with dumpsters represent almost 70% of the base, and they are 94% of the waste stream of the business sector. Most customers in dumpsters will see relatively large increases in their bills if they're below 50% and if they take no action. Some examples of impacts to customers, and these were shared in our public forums with the four major business groups and with members of the public that own businesses in Santa Barbara. But a small-sized business, this is a customer that has two 96-gallon carts at 0% diversion. You can see they actually would be paying $121 a month currently. It would go up by 60 cents per month if they did nothing, less than 1% change. In the 50% diversion category, if half their service is devoted to recycling or food scraps, they go from $60.53 to $60.83, a 30 cents per month change. And if they were to divert 2/3 or 66%, they would actually see a 20% increase. This was a function of the rate structure. The outcome was really focused on normalizing the rates between cans, carts, and dumpsters, and we had a lot of inconsistencies between those two customer classes. And what's important to note here is that all of these customers still, as we stated a couple of slides ago, can save considerable amounts of money on their bills if they were to move up in diversion. For example, if this 0% diversion customer who has just trash goes to 50%, introduces one cart of recycling, they can reduce their bill by one-half to $60.83. So medium-sized customers, I believe these are 12 cubic yards.
Madam Mayor, can I ask them a question about that previous slide?
Sure, go ahead. Good time.
Yes, Mr. McIntosh, on that previous slide. So this is what you meant when you said cart-and-cans. The smaller users, the little stores, the offices, for instance, places like that, you're saying that the rates are going to pretty much stay the same, infinitesimal increase, but if they were to change their way they use the carts and cans, they could significantly reduce their bill?
Madam Mayor, council member House, that's exactly correct. If they want to move up in diversion, they can save a good deal of money. If they do nothing, it will be a very small change upwards.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's important to -- thank you, Bob. These customers, the 31% of the businesses out there in the city, these are the folks that are the small, family-owned businesses, but these are the customers that we have not made a large effort contacting. We have our staff focusing on now is the large generators, the larger customers at the beginning, those folks that are going to be seeing the greatest potential increases to their bills. We wanted to get out, and per your direction, we wanted to get out to those folks early and let them know what's happening, so that they can save or avoid the increases to their bills. So these customers, while they can make the changes, we're not actively seeking them out as staff. We're hoping that they will find out through our notices and/or over time. We'll get to them as well.
So the goal is to get to them, but not at first. Yeah, I understand why.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because these are the mom-and-pop stores they're kind of hanging on to right now in this recession, and if they can save half of their bills.
Yeah, $80 a month for a small shop is a whole lot.
Here's a small shop owner right there.
Happens to know. But yes, so you're planning to go out to them eventually. Right now, you're working on the big guys.
That's correct.
Madam Mayor?
Or our direction, actually, Mr. Samario.
And Mr. Hislop indicated that he was concerned, that there was some concern that these businesses weren't really touched or couldn't, you know, as part of our outreach effort, couldn't be touched, or maybe didn't see the notices, or couldn't attend the forums. And we recognize that, of course, it's really difficult to go out and touch every business.
Right.
But because they would be really not even impacted, or virtually not impacted, if they did nothing else, that we felt that it was okay, that we didn't touch them, but eventually they would learn, and over time, they could start saving money, but at least they wouldn't see a big increase in their rates immediately.
Right. Okay, thanks.
And just as a note, these are all of the examples we've placed on the draft Proposition 218 notice. If you all direct us today to move forward with that, it's all of these numbers, all the numbers that are in that notice. So medium-sized businesses, these are 12 cubic yard-per-week customers. Customer that's at 0% diversion or has two dumpsters dedicated to trash would see their $741 per month bill go up to $878, or an 18 and 1/2% change, pretty significant. If they're at 50% diversion, however, that was our goal, that was kind of like the fulcrum for us, they would see a $551 per month bill go down to 504. They would save about 50 bucks per month. And a 66% diversion customer would go from $493 a month currently down to $366. It's important to note again, though, all of these customers can move diagonally through this table. A 0% customer can go down to 50% or $504 per month, $240 or $236 a month savings. They could move down to 66% diversion or $366 per month bill. And then finally, large customers, these are those that have 48 cubic yards a week and more. These are big customers. There are, I believe, 30 of those in the city. We've talked to all of them. Those customers that are at 0% diversion would be looking at a $27.53 per month currently with the current structure. That would go up to $35.92 with the new bill or the new rates if they did nothing. However, if this customer would just move diagonally through it, if they moved to 50%, they can save almost $700 a month by replacing half of their trash containers with recycling or green waste or food. If they get to 2/3 diversion, which is our unofficial, but it is our stated goal out in the community, when we talk to businesses, we try to get them to recycle more. We say, we're looking for 2/3 diversion from everyone, and it's actually on the bills currently. We say, we hope that we can all get to at least 2/3 diversion for all businesses. Anyhow, if they get to 2/3 diversion or 66%, their bill goes down to $15.56, a significant savings. So the outreach, this is what you directed us to do on March 3, when we presented this new proposed rate structure. And we heard you loud and clear and put together this plan and implemented it over the last several months. We made several presentations to business groups, and we'll go into more detail in just a moment. We had four public meetings. We sent out messages in the utility bills. We sent out a direct mailing to 1,700 business accounts, all of the business customers in our CIS billing system. And we developed two websites, one on the proposed rate structure itself and one dedicated to the food scraps recovery and composting program. And then we have three and a half staff dedicated to providing technical assistance to the business customers out there. The group presentations, the first, as Mr. Hislop said, I believe two of you were there, maybe three, actually, the Restaurant and Lodging Association at the Maritime Museum on March 18. That was a general membership meeting. There was about 60 people in attendance. That followed with a Chamber of Commerce meeting, the Government Affairs Subcommittee, and about 20 or 21 people heard that presentation on March 19. The business leaders meeting, we had Bill Collier, Sergio Villa from the Hispanic Chamber, and Steve Hislop from the Restaurant and Lodging Association in that meeting, where we reviewed the presentations we had been giving, the information we'd been providing, and asked their feedback to see where they thought we were missing information or missing key points for their members. And then a presentation to the downtown organization on April 14, the Board of Directors Monthly Meeting at the, what was the, on the Lucie, I forget the name, the new hotel.
Canary.
The Canary Hotel, thank you. The public meetings that we held as staff, we put together a presentation and put it out to all businesses via utility bills and direct mailings. And we announced it at the business group presentations we just talked about in the former slide. But we gave four presentations. We had four public forums, April 20, 28, and then two more on May 14 and May 19. We tried focusing on food service businesses in one and non-food service businesses in the other. Those were not super well-attended, but there were a good number of super-interested people representing a representing a large number of businesses, like Michael Jordan and Steve Hislop. They attended those meetings, were very helpful to us. And then additional information, we notified the businesses out there of all the meetings and the proposed rate changes on our utility bill messages, an actual message printed on the bill, and then the City News and Brief, the billing insert. We sent out a direct mailing or a letter to all businesses, as I mentioned previously, to the bill payer. Not necessarily always the business owner, but the bill payer received these bills. And again, as I said, we created a couple of websites dedicated to the rate structure and the food scrap program. And then we actually sent out some information to the business groups and had two very good newsletters printed or two very good articles printed in their newsletters on the proposed rate structure, the Downtown Organization and the Greater Santa Barbara Restaurant and Lodging Association. So some of the questions that we received on a fairly regular or recurring basis included the following: How do the city's programs actually work, recycling and composting programs? How is methane generated in the landfill? What is the Tejas landfill's closure date? How does the city plan to achieve revenue neutrality? And what are the overall economics of the program? Does this program increase the potential for vectors? Some of the more general feedback we received from the businesses at these forums and at these presentations and via email, as a matter of fact, that we need to make sure we provide the educational materials necessary that shows businesses and their staff what actually can be recycled or composted, what can go into the recycling and food scrap spins. We need to reach out to the large generators, which we have done. And then just the general overall acceptance and enthusiasm for the new proposed rates and food scraps program. We didn't hear the term "a cautious support" for the program. We sensed that, but at the presentations themselves, we got very good positive feedback from the business community. Technical assistance has been provided to all the large generators in the city, as I was saying earlier. There's 31 in total. I was saying that was 48 cubic yards. It's actually 24 cubic yards and greater. Those are the large customers. 27 of those 31 were actually below 50% diversion, so they were looking at a potentially large increase to their monthly bills. And this outreach includes the efforts we're making with the school districts. Staff has also been working with approximately 200 small to medium businesses in the city, performing assessments of their waste streams, their containers that are on-site at the business, and doing an economic analysis for them. Again, about 31% or 1/3 of all the businesses are very small. They are difficult to reach by staff on a one-to-one basis. Again, they're 6% of the waste stream. At this point, we're assisting them on a request basis, but we will be making an effort to reach all of them as we move forward. And again, information's been provided on the website, sbrecycles.org. The next step that staff is recommending is additional outreach. We're moving forward, if directed today by council, with print and radio and television PSAs, continuing our technical assistance for medium and large generators, and then moving on to small generators, providing the results of the outreach and proposed schedule to you, City Council, and then moving forward with noticing, if directed this month. The schedule proposed is to send out the Prop. 218 notice, again, if directed by council, the second half of this month and the first half of August, to complete a full billing cycle, have a rate hearing at City Council in early October, and then the resolution to council for adoption would be two weeks later. And then the new rates would take effect, as Mr. Samario said, November 1, if this is approved and directed by council today. And before we move on to other questions, I'd like to address some of the issues that Mr. Hislop brought up and what we received from Michael Jordan earlier in an email this week, I believe it was yesterday. We've put together a handful of responses that I think will be helpful for you as council and for the community. Karen, if you can switch, oh, you've got it going. Bob's going to switch the, there we go. So these are the questions that Steve read off recently or just a few minutes ago at the dais and what you received, an email from Michael Jordan. Michael Jordan is the executive, or insurance executive at Ogilvy Hill. He's also a secretary for the Greater, or Santa Barbara Restaurant and Lodging Association. He was very active in our outreach efforts. He was at a lot of our meetings and had a lot of good feedback for us as staff. We want to take a moment to address some of his issues that he recently brought up or raised yesterday. But first, I also wanted to say, he was originally somewhat hesitant or resistant about this new rate, proposed rate structure. And as we met and presented and he heard more and more, he became not an avid proponent, but a lot more comfortable with this and was greatly appreciative of what we were doing and made it clear that it is definitely a challenge from his experience and Steve's experience to get to reach everyone. That would be one of our biggest challenges. But his feedback has been invaluable. He actually wrote an excellent newsletter in the Greater Santa Barbara Lodging and Restaurant Association monthly about the rate study. He took our information from the website and the direct mailing that we've put out to all the businesses and kind of congealed it into one and sent it to their membership, and it was probably the best thing that was written about the rate study. So we've shared that with several businesses since then. So the first question from both Mr. Hislop and Mr. Jordan was, are there ample opportunities for sharing containers or enclosures, especially in the downtown area where it's space-constrained? This overhead here, the first half of it anyhow, shows a handful of sharing arrangements that have been put together by one of our recycling coordinators. We have two full-time recycling coordinators. One of them recently changed positions, and I wasn't able to get a hold of her information this morning, but this is, again, this is one full-time staff's efforts over the last couple of years. But you can see a lot of businesses are involved in one enclosure. These are all successful bin-sharing agreements. Victoria Court in the right-hand column, there are over 50 businesses involved there from all types, from restaurants to offices. They're originally having three, four cubic yard trash containers serviced six times a week, all trash. They are now diverting 66% of their waste. Two of those four yards are dedicated to recycling and only one is trash. It's a huge victory. And then go ahead to the bottom half of that, Karen. The other areas in the city that he has put together sharing agreements or bin-sharing agreements are Parking Lot 4 and the Granada Garage, where Environmental Services resides, and then up in the other areas of the city, up at the Mesa and Five Point Shopping Center. These take a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of perseverance, but they eventually come to fruition. Our recycling coordinators have actually never failed at getting a bin-sharing agreement. That's not to say it won't happen someday, but they've been 100% successful to date. One example I wanted to share with you was the Los Royos Mexican Restaurant on, I believe, Figueroa Street. They initially were somewhat resistant to sharing their enclosure that they had built, understandably so, and I have her permission to say this, so that's why we're using them, calling them out by name. But she was resistant or somewhat hesitant to share her enclosure. They didn't know who would be responsible for keeping it clean. They didn't know if two bins would be enough for six businesses sharing that enclosure, if they'd be violating county health regs, if there'd be more vectors involved. But our staff, recycling staff, met with them several times, addressed all of their concerns. An addenda was added to their agreement, and all parties signed on and had their needs and requests met. A year after the bin-sharing program was put into place for the Los Royos enclosure, they've saved many hundreds of dollars on their trash bill. They're enthusiastic about the recycling program and the success of the bin-sharing agreement, and now they are vocal proponents of our recycling and our food scraps programs. So, next slide, Karen. What will be the impact to recycling customers if the response is much greater than anticipated? We, again, we hired Lisa Skoomatz, who has done many dozens of these rate studies over the years, and did our best with her to predict behavior based on certain structures or different rate structures for trash and diversion services. And we actually developed a contingency fund of about $300, $350,000 if we were to fall short of our anticipated revenues of $8 million for the business sector. But what was brought up by Mr. Jordan, Mr. Hislop, is what happens if we do much better than we anticipate, if we hit a diversion rate of 20% or 25% for the business sector. We're anticipating 14%, as you saw on the previous slide, at the end of the year. 7% is our average. Yeah, an increase. But if we increased it by 28% by the end of the year or 14% on average, if we doubled our expectations, what would happen? And that's a fair question. It's a good one for us to have to analyze and answer. So what we did was, we looked at if we came up a million dollars short, if we raised only $7 million of the 8 million that the haulers currently bring in to the system, what would be the impact to a couple of different customers? A customer here that's at 0% diversion with 12 cubic yards a week, this is the same customer we looked at in the PowerPoint presentation, but if they're at 0% diversion and they went from $740 to $878 approximately per month with the new structure, if we fell a million dollars short and had to change their bill, it would go up by about 8% or up to $950 almost, a pretty significant increase. However, if this customer at 50% went from $551 with the current structure down to $504, and then we were required to adjust the bills because we fell short of revenue by a million dollars, they would go up to $545, still below what they started at, which is good. And then 66%, this customer would drop down to $366. It would go up to $395 if we had to adjust the bills. But once again, it's important to keep in mind, these customers can move diagonally through this chart. This 0% customer can go down to $504. $740 could become $545 if we have to adjust the bills. We were very conservative in our diversion estimates. This consultant, who has many years of experience doing this, suggested that, the haulers suggested that. We, as staff, thought it was smart to start with lower rates rather than higher, rather than raising too much revenue and having to reimburse all of the businesses out there in the city. It'd be better to start with slightly lower expectations and then raise the rates as necessary. So the next example.
Stephen, can I jump in real quick?
Mr. Samario.
Karen, can you put the previous slide back, please? I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're talking about here. It's kind of ironic or not really intuitive, but if we are really successful in our program, if we divert more, we see businesses diverting more than we projected, we are going to fall short on our revenues because they're taking advantage of the cheaper containers, revenues drop, and so we still have the obligation to the haulers to keep them haul. And that's one of the reasons for a contingency fund of $350,000. We really don't expect that we're going to achieve anything close to where we get a million-dollar shortfall. And more likely, we're going to fall short of our projections. But again, as Stephen indicated, a good question to ask and to answer, what happens if we are wildly successful, everybody gets to 66% diversion, and we therefore fall short of a million dollars? So this indicates that a million dollars, after backing out the $350 contingency, we'd be left with a shortfall of $650, which represents about 8% of the total bills or total revenues. So we wouldn't adjust the bills immediately. Those bills would be adjusted the following year in order to recover that by 8%. So next year, they would see their bill, this first example, they're still 0% diversion, their new bill would be $878. The following year, we'd have to adjust it by 8% so that we're not continuing to lose any kind of money. We'd have to recover that, so we'd go up to $948. But as Stephen indicated, they could still take advantage of lower rates by diverting more and still save money, even if we had to adjust rates back up to 8%. And that's kind of the point. And as Stephen indicated, you know, should we have projected higher at 28% diversion? That would have meant that we would have rates, as presented in the far-right column this year. Better to sort of be more conservative, and then if we need to adjust them, again, we can do it more in a two-step process rather than having to pay unnecessarily this year more and then have to reduce rates next year. Does that make sense?
It does.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, okay. Mr. Falcone and then Ms. ...
Question just exactly on this point. So, to be clear, what you're saying is that as people do better, they achieve a tremendous saving or substantial savings. As they do even better, they achieve less of the savings. So that there's a tipping point in the system where people will ultimately, if they're at all good at business at all, figure out where that percentage is between 50 and 66 and keep it there. So that's not exactly achieving our goal. I mean, it is, but it prevents people from going as far as they can because if you hit that tipping point, then your rates start going back up. So they'll figure out where the bottom is, keep it there, and then we won't achieve any further diversion from these folks. That's going to be the way it's going to work in the real world, very likely. So I'm wondering whether or not there is another way to address diversion after the tipping point has been reached by a particular business. And maybe we just haven't thought about it yet, and maybe it'll appear to us down the road, but I submit this is not the way, although I realize it's the only way you have right now of addressing it. But I think that we need to get a little smarter, a little more creative, and maybe it's getting the system on the ground and seeing how it works. And what are some of the other incentives? I mean, if the bills are going to go, is there another way to recover the money that we will be subsidizing if we do really, really well? If not, is there an incentive, an additional incentive, to give the businesses to go further, have their bills increase from the bottom, from the lowest amount they can achieve? Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay, so we've got a glitch here. But I think that, I mean, I'm very grateful for all the work that you've done, and I'm going to let you finish your presentation before I say anything else. But as, I don't know, longtime or original chair of this committee, the work that this committee has done and that staff has done in this entire area of solid waste has been phenomenal. And this is a great program. I thank you for the extra outreach, but we got to work some more on this piece of it. So, anyway, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McIntosh.
What you're saying is true in theory, and it is really more of a, not just a tipping point, but a mass balance equation. If every business, every one of the 1,700 businesses in the city hit 66% or 80% or whatever the diversion is, and we were wildly successful, we would have to adjust the rates significantly, and everybody's savings would be diminished. They wouldn't necessarily be unable to save money. They would be able to save less money than they currently are. So we understand that that is theoretically a possibility. If that mass balance equation becomes such that everyone is over here in 66% diversion column, the reality of it is, as Lisa Skoomatz and her staff have experienced for the last 25 years, is that diversion actually typically goes up 2% to 3% or 5%. We're projecting a 7% diversion rate. We don't anticipate it to get to the point where all the businesses move to 66% diversion today or tomorrow or even next year. We want everyone to get over there in the next five to 10 years. We think it may be possible. It's going to take a long time and a lot of effort, but this is an excellent first step.
Right, but I don't think that, I mean, each individual business will experience this in their each individual selves if they go farther than a certain point. I understand the sort of macro analysis that she was making and that based on everyone, certain things happen. But in reality, I think that these, the formula will apply to each individual in their own right as well. So I just encourage you to look at that.
I'm not convinced in some ways, because if I owned a little sewing machine shop, for instance, I just made that up, it came to me, and I was paying $740 a month. I know this is for medium businesses, so maybe a little bigger business.
But wildly successful sewing shop.
A wildly successful, okay, that works. There you go, wildly successful one. But if I was paying $740 a month, there is a huge incentive for me to pay $366 a month, just huge. So, you know, I think this is going to be more successful. I know people are working very hard already in their businesses, and they don't want to have to work any harder in some ways, but I think they're going to find that what they do at home... they do at home translates over to what they will do in their business. And at home, we're probably doing somewhere between 16 and 80%, depending on whose house you live in. Yeah, I know, but in my house, I think it's closer to 80 when I started to look at it. So I think that, I think the incentive is here for businesses. And I think they will do--
It's actually not even harder to do. I mean, that's, we got that feedback, remember at the meeting with the downtown organization, they were talking about how the ones that have been doing the composting, how they do the sort right in the kitchen where they just have a different plastic bag to put the scrapings off the plates into. And that was, that was a great work effort right there. It wasn't like this great big deal. And I think that was one of the messages I got back from the people that have been using it. Now, the others who haven't yet might have concerns, but the ones that are using the program and have been practicing with you or giving us feedback that it was not all that great effort. The big concern was whether they could do it or not. That had to do with the space and the sharing of the bins and that kind of stuff. They wanted to be sure they had the opportunity, which was a different twist altogether.
That's right. Okay, Mr. Francisco, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Samario, looking at your chart, so the idea is that if, for some reason, you had this million dollar shortfall, you would increase each of the levels 8%. And was there any thought given to maybe changing that percent, like the percentage is higher at the zero diversion level and then lower as the diversion rate goes up?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, that's a good question. The 8% would be applied across all rates. We don't want to really mess with the structure as it is, because right now, there's a pretty dramatic savings between diversion containers and the price of trash. It's a 15% or 85% savings in effect, and we don't want to mess with that. So we're going to maintain that same structure and differential. Everything just goes up 8%. So we don't think it's appropriate to increase even further those incentives or penalties by lowering it to that 15% for example. So the structure remains the same, everybody just goes up 8%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Horton, and then Mr. Williams.
Is it comment time, or?
No, no, this is just on this, I'm sorry.
Okay, nope.
That's okay, Mr. Williams, okay, never mind. Go ahead, Mr. Matantash.
Thank you. So a similar example, go to the next slide, Karen. For large customers, these are again 48 cubic yards a week and larger. If there was a $1 million shortfall in revenues, a 0% diverting customer would go to 3592 with the new bill or the new structure. And if we fell short, we would increase that bill by a couple hundred dollars almost to 3772. However, this customer, if they wanted to increase to 50% diversion, could come down here to 20, or 2077, and an adjustment for them would bring them back up to 2243. However, that's still a $500 savings over what they were at 0% diversion. Go ahead, Karen. So another question is whether the city staff has communicated with county environmental health staff on the proposed food scraps composting program. We actually have been in contact with county health staff on a regular basis for the past year. We have had several phone calls, a number of email exchanges, and in-person meetings discussing the program. They've asked a lot of really good questions of us from all of the logistics, including carts and placement of bins and the success of the pilot program, what some of the challenges were of the pilot program. But in the end of all of that, they, their supervising staff has been very supportive and very encouraging. They've actually said that they see vectors being potentially reduced by the different containers that are being used and being proposed to use, namely the carts in a lot of situations that have the fixed lids. The material's already out there, it's in the trash cans, it's just being moved into another one with a fixed lid. So of the 13 participants in our pilot program, not one has had a health permit violation in the past two-plus years. And there are currently over 13 cities and 3,000 participants across California that are separating and collecting food scraps for composting. So we're quite encouraged by those statistics, and we're also in direct communication with county health staff on our plans for the food scraps program. And they are supportive. Okay, go ahead, Karen. So another question was, why is the city, if this material is so valuable, why is the city proposing to send it up to Santa Maria, 75 miles from here, instead of finding some local agricultural land here? The only commercially certified composting facility in the county of Santa Barbara is Engle and Gray, up just south of Santa Maria. That's where we're intending to send that, where we have a contract in place to do so. We cannot send our food to any other place that's not certified by the state. The Engle and Gray facility has a full solid waste facility permit, which makes it legal for them to accept this material. That said, we could choose a plot of land somewhere here on the South Coast and go through an EIR process in three or four or five years of process to get a composting operation going down here, but that's many years away. And I don't know if anybody, or if there are any business interests in doing something like that. But this is our first destination, the Engle and Gray facility. And then finally, will small, family-owned businesses see significant increases to their bills? Another very important question that we received from Mr. Jordan and Mr. Hislop. Back to the slide that we had in the presentation, a little bit different format, but this is a customer that has two 96-gallon carts, pretty standard for a small business. It's one cubic yard or just under 200 gallons per week. Anyhow, if they're not diverting anything, they're paying $121 per month. The new rate, if we don't get to them before November 1st, or they don't get to us and no change is made, their rate is going to go up 60 cents per month. If they move down to 50% diversion, or up to 50% diversion, I should say, but down in this matrix, down to this level with the new bill, it would be $60.83 a month, over $60 upon savings. And similarly, if they get 66% diversion, they're at $40.55 per month. So relatively small impact to most small businesses that have can and cart service. If they do nothing, that's correct. If they do something, they can save a significant amount of money. So I believe, is that it, Karen, of your slides? I believe that's it for the questions that were asked of us this morning, or yesterday morning. We'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have at this time.
Okay. We're just being asked to receive your report on the outreach effort and then to direct staff to initiate a Prop 218 noticing requirement. Mr. Horton, and then Mr. Williams.
I was on the DO board about 15 years ago now, it looks like. And we had talked about this idea, you know, way back then. And of course, we didn't have anything like the details now, but it's not like it's a totally new idea for the community. It has been discussed on and off. I think I was certainly one that wanted more input and more contact with the business community, and I see that you did that. Steve Hislop made a comment that there will still be people who aren't aware of what's happening, and there's just no doubt about that. There's a whole lot of reasons for that, but he's correct in that the people that see the bills are oftentimes not the ones that run the businesses and vice versa. And there will be, I'm sure, people still not aware of what we're doing. But I've looked at everything you've done, and I think you've done a complete and thorough job. I think you've done as good a job as you could have done. I can't find any fault in it. And so when it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion if we're going to do that.
You can go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, well, I'll move recommendation, actually, A is just receive your report, and recommendation B is direct staff to initiate a noticing process per Proposition 218. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a second, Mr. Williams?
Well, I, one of my first jobs when I was still 16 years old was to work for Community Environmental Council. I was a grunt at the recycling center here and down in Carpinteria and Montecito. There was a little substation in Montecito. And, you know, it was, you smelled bad at the end of the day because of all the beer cans that you're handling and soda cans, but man, you sure felt like you were getting something good done. And we, at that time, were worried that recycling might not be headed anywhere because the commodity prices were going down and that we wouldn't be able to recycle newspaper or cardboard anymore. And, or actually, we were thinking at the time that we wouldn't be able to recycle glass anymore. And it's amazing to see years later how far we are coming, and it's pretty inspirational to see how far we are coming with recycling. And I particularly want to speak in regards to what an opportunity the food scrap program is for businesses to save money and for the city to save money, because it's cheaper per ton. I mean, it's not only good for the environment, reduces methane going out and warming up our earth, but it's just cheaper for us to dispose of food scraps by composting them than it is to put in the landfill. And that's really, really important for us to save money and for businesses to save money, because, you know, sometimes there's businesses that have reached their max or what they think of as their max for recycling, but if they, but if they have any food, that's usually going in the trash can. And so there's an enormous potential, since food makes up such a huge part of any business or home's food waste or trash, a total amount of trash, to be able to put a lot of this in food scraps and save the businesses money. And so I just want to say that this is the most exciting part to me of the program, is first of all, what Brian Barnwell always was talking about on the Solid Waste Committee, which is, let's make sure that there's a price incentive to recycle. And then secondly, initiating a food scrap program, which is an opportunity for everybody who throws, you know, anything away or has lunches to reduce their bill.
Very good. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. Was grunt the official job title? I guess so. Just checking.
I'm not sure. It was 19 years ago, I can't remember.
Checking. Thank you for the presentation and--
Smelly Boy.
Smelly Boy, lovely.
As suggested.
Boy, that, never mind. Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate the efforts you took into outreach the last several months as directed by us. I think moving forward, now that the Prop 218 requirements are going to go on, there are going to be other business owners who are going to see this more as a practice or coming, you know, as something that will happen versus a theory. So there might be more interest and not to give up on those interactions with them. And I appreciate that there'll be TV, you know, inside Santa Barbara things, that kind of promotion, but it's that face-to-face contact I think will be really important. One of the things I heard from you in this presentation and from talking with others is that the questions that come up, once they're answered and once they're explained, I think that cautiously supportive side of things move into enthusiastically supportive side, because they understand how they can significantly save money and how it can work because the department, our department, is going to work with them in the logistics around making it happen. So I would encourage that those efforts continue as much as we can on a face-to-face basis. I'd also suggest that even though the small shop owners may not see a significant increase in less than 1%, that in fact, we do do a little effort in reaching out to those mom and pop and those small shop owners about the savings, because as the mayor just said earlier, they're hanging by on a thread right now in this economy, and whatever we can do as a city to help them reduce their expenses, I think in effect actually helps the city in the long run, because then they'll stay in business. And I think that's really important, too. So I wouldn't keep that on a back burner. In fact, I'd try to move that up as much as we could, you know, given the resources you have. But I think, look forward to seeing this come back, and we'll see what kind of response we get from the Prop 218 noticing. But I appreciate you taking the time and going through each of the questions raised by Mr. Hislop and Mr. Jordan, because they're good ones. And I think, once we know more, we, like I said, I'd like to see it move from the cautiously supportive category into the enthusiastically supportive, and that's really incumbent upon us to make that happen. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? Yes, Mr. House?
Yes, and it includes this comment and a request. One of the things I just want to say that echoes what Mr. Hislop said when he was here before, and I feel like I can speak on pretty good authority from my own experience, but also from what I've been hearing from other businesses. And that is that the business community, there would be just so few out there that would not, I think, agree with this, are very supportive of doing the environmentally right thing or socially just thing. I mean, it's just like what we do in business, it's how we, that's where we come from. We're not trying to do damage, we're trying to do good things. And given an opportunity, and in this case, an opportunity with an incentive, I mean, it then becomes kind of a no-brainer. I know that Edison, when they do the energy audits, I mean, that's directly money in my pockets, you know, and you can add up how many hundred dollars a year or thousands of dollars for larger businesses. This is the same thing here. And in this day and time, to be able to do what's environmentally the right thing and to do it in a way that actually helps you out is like just excellent. What a great role for us in government and for the private sector to be working together. And I really liked it, that the questions that were asked of you and all of us were hard questions. They were like, you know, well, how does this work? But there was a constructive criticism there. So I want to really put some thanks and kudos out to the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Organization, the Greater Santa Barbara Restaurant and Lodging Association. Those organizations really stepped up and participated and helped us out on this. The other thing, which, okay, you can't write the news, okay, because the First Amendment lets people do what they want to do, but in order to kind of head off a headline in the paper that says, "The City of Santa Barbara Increases Trash Rates 30%," or some stupid thing, when all we're doing is moving this on for the noticing process for 218, I would really encourage you to write a press release tonight and get it out to the media and let them know what you're doing. This is very complex, and finding some way to actually put it in laypeople's terms, this is a real golden opportunity to let people know as part of that process of what happened today and what didn't, you know, where we're going with this thing. And I think that would be helpful. I think we really need to be mindful that it's easy to not understand this until somebody's just taken a minute and kind of put it in common terms. And you've done a great job doing that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay, I have an adjournment to our site visit on Merrill Lane. Oh, that, it's been withdrawn, I thought I had seen that. And I know, okay, but that, so item number 13 is not true anymore, okay, since it's been withdrawn, so we will just simply adjourn.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Before we adjourn under Council Communications, can I just have a moment of your indulgence?
Sure.
There was an event of some significance that happened last week that is going to affect us all, which I had the privilege of attending on the region's behalf, actually, the Channel Counties Division of the League of California Cities. That was a summit that happened in Sacramento called the Rebuilding California From the Ground Up. It's a local government summit on state governance and fiscal reform. It is made up of a coalition called CCS, Cities, Counties, and Schools, which is the League of California Cities, where I sit on the Board of Directors, CSAC, which is the county component, and the California School Board Association. And we met Friday and Saturday in Sacramento on whether or not the state, there should be a state constitutional convention for the first time since the founding of the state, since the incorporation of the state, if you will, whether or not a constitutional convention is necessary to fundamentally reform the governance of the state of California, which as we've seen as of last night and today and all through the previous months, is fundamentally and clearly broken. It was a packed attendance, it was a lively discussion, and Dave Mullenix, who is our regional representative, and/or Chris McKenzie, who is the executive director of the League of California Cities, will be giving a synopsis and a report, and I'm sure you all, you all get that, but I'll make sure that when I get it, that I'll forward it off to all of you, because this is a matter of some really gigantic significance. And it was a very interesting meeting, and it's, I think it's just the beginning on how we get our arms around regoverning or reformulating the governance of the state of California. So I was honored to be there on all of our behalf. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are adjourned.